Happy New Years and welcome to this January 8, 2024 special meeting of Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, Chairman of the Board, and to my left is Doc Chair or Vice Chair. I would like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone for being here today. Before we begin, I'd like to ask the members of our Board to introduce themselves.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Josh Chris, Dallas Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Ian Stevens, River Bend Township.
Brett Moore, Crowers Mountain Township.
Thank you. Our next order of business is adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Moore? Second, Mr. Dedman? All in favor? That's unanimous. The agenda is adopted. Our next order of business will require the Board to go into closed session for personnel. Because there are so many in the audience, we decided to have our closed session portion in our conference room and leave y'all here. And hopefully we'll have some great music for you. When that has concluded, we will return to the boardroom for some exciting news related to our superintendent's search. Thank you for being here and for your patience for the next few minutes. So now I need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-3, 18/11A6 for personnel.
Second. Mr. Stevens, all in favor? That's unanimous. We'll go in closed session.
We'll be back.
We're back in open session. Thank you for your patience as we conducted that portion of the meeting in the closed session. We're now ready to move forward with the next item on the agenda, the appointment of our new superintendent. This is an action item and I do need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Dr. Morgan Hushard to serve as Superintendent of Gaston County Schools.
I didn't finish. Let me start over. I move we appoint Dr. Morgan Hushard to serve as Superintendent of Gaston County Schools effective February 19, 2024, and that we approve the contract discussed in closed session.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Lovelace.
Yes, I would like to say for public record that my vote this evening is simply a reflection on the fact that I was not present during the time that this was discussed and decided upon. However, going forward, I would like to say that I will be supporting Dr. Hushard 100% in the future because I'm sure that everything he does will be the best decisions for Gaston County Schools, for the employees, as well as for the students. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kinlaw?
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township. I'd like to read my statement. The statement has no ill will or anything to do with the actual person who is to be named Superintendent, only the process, as my colleague said, of which this Board used. I want to go on record that this Board was hijacked by members. The process was not flawed, and unfortunately, this Board handled this matter in an unethical way. As far as I'm concerned, this has been the biggest joke I've ever been associated with. As I remember, it takes five people to make a majority. And we didn't do it in good faith as a Board. There was a majority in the initial process, but we had members of this Board who created controversy and hoodwinked some of us and took advantage of people not being present during our meeting. It can be better called a dirty process, or I can call it underhanded. I will not have any part of it. I'm not voting in favor of the Superintendent for the record to show the flawed process. Like I said, four of us hijacked the process. I'm not voting tonight for the person because of the students and teachers of Gaston County deserve this Board to be held to the highest standards. The employees already have had to endure many issues created by this Board, of which I'm a part of. I ran on transparency and credibility of my actions. We have failed at our job to have credibility in this process. It's not because that the Superintendent has flaws, it's because the flaws were created by this Board. I share this so that each one of you will be held accountable for the actions you took, the corners cut, and the downright despicable process of hiring this gentleman. Our students, our employees, and this county deserve the best, and we settled because there were some who didn't get your way. The old take your ball and go home. The way this process was handled was not okay last month, not okay last week, not okay tonight. When you refer to one of us, the old adage is we haven't been here long enough to make this decision. I take offense to that. I'm going to stand up and I'm going to let you know I'm voting no to this appointment tonight because, not because of the Superintendent of record, but because simply the process was not followed. I don't like getting my way is what was taken out of this, and so we take our ball and go home, as I said. So that's why. Mr. Hushard, I will back you once the process, but I want the folks to know that I was hired on transparency and truth and credibility. I wish you all the best, and I'll stand with you.
Ms. Guthrie?
I value leadership, and I hope that leadership values the community it serves. I want the community to know, not just the person whom we are going to vote on tonight or have voted on already, but leadership is knowing the community, knowing the needs of the community, reaching out into the community to make assessment, to truly serve our population of families, to truly understand the needs of our children and where they are from and how to effectively communicate with all parents, all children, as you assess those needs. Trust is a very important word. Leadership is embedded in that trust, and I hope that you will start, Dr. Hushard. Start off knowing the community, Gaston County, not just a special population, but the population of Gaston County. And sir, I am willing to support you 100%, but I want to know that our families are going to be supported by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Anyone else? Anyone else for a call for a vote?
Just want to say real quick that I share some of the other concerns that other board members have. We did have a majority prior to a work session where our decision as a majority had been made and then hijacked that decision. But I will tell you this, I'd be a lot more upset if it wasn't Morgan Hushard. I know he's going to do a fantastic job for Gaston County Schools, and I don't like the process that they took to get there, but I like the man that they chose, and I'm excited to work with him, and I know he's going to do what's best for Gaston County Schools.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Well, congratulations, Dr. Hushard. You've been selected. to say how fortunate we are to have him as the next leader of Gaston County Schools. During his successful career in public education, Dr. Hushard has proven time after time that he possessed the knowledge, skills, and expertise to serve us as superintendent. He's been a classroom teacher, assistant principal, a principal, a central office administrator with experience in academics, curriculum, accountability, personnel, transportation, school nutrition, technology, facilities, school safety, and student service, and others. I think I put bus driver and cafeteria worker. So, having experienced all these areas makes him well-rounded in our school district operations. He always has significant knowledge of Gaston County Schools. Dr. Hushard is the ideal person to serve as our superintendent, and we are confident that he will take us in new directions and begin moving us forward right away. So, at this time, I would like to give Dr. Hushard the opportunity to say a few words.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you. Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude and appreciation to the Board of Education for giving me this opportunity and believing in my ability to serve as a superintendent for Gaston County Schools. I am truly honored. I look forward to working with you all and am committed to doing everything I can to make our school system even stronger, because I believe having strong schools is directly connected to the strength of our community and our nation. When my daughter, wife, and I packed up our things to move to Gaston County Schools eight years ago, we were excited, but we didn't know what to expect. We did not know what would we find with Josie's teachers, her school, the school system, or our new community. I want to take a minute to tell you what we found. We found teachers who deeply cared about their students and the teaching and learning that goes on in their classrooms. We found teachers who challenged their students with high expectations and then worked to help them be successful. And we found teachers who embraced their communities. We found staff and school leaders who went above and beyond to help ensure that schools were safe and orderly for a learning environment. They made teaching and learning the priority and the center of all things. We found an active relationship with the community involving parents as a genuine part of the school culture, and we found school pride. We found the 10th largest school district in North Carolina that still felt and treated us as if it were one of the smallest. We experienced district leadership and a board of education that worked hard to ensure schools were supported in their work by providing the best educational experience for students. One where rigor, relevance, and equity were center of discussions and all decisions. And we watched as parents, community members, partners, and all stakeholders were involved in that process. And we found a community that embraced us as citizens and welcomed us to our new home. I am so proud to be a part of the Gaston County Schools and truly honored to be its next superintendent. I want to thank you, the Board of Education, once again for your trust and the opportunity to lead this district. I want students, faculty, staff, administrators, parents, and the community to know how excited I am to be a part of the Gaston County Schools family. I look forward to be able to working with you all in the years to come. Thank you.
As we close our meeting, thank you for sharing this exciting time with us as we share with you a selection of our Gaston County superintendent. We look forward to the February 19th when Dr. Hushard will take the lead. Until that time, we remain grateful to Dr. Steve Lost. We can't get rid of him. Well, I was getting ready to say Dr. Folger, too, is agreed to stay with the night. So, they'll be here until we get through the transition of February 19th. Our regular meeting will be in, our next regular meeting will be in conjunction with our board retreat will be held on Friday, January 26, 2024. While we have you here, thank you for your support for this board and Gaston County School for what you do for our children in Gaston County. Y'all go the extra mile every day, and we know it, and we appreciate it. So, now, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Law. Mr. Chris, second. Also, we're going to have a little reception where y'all can meet with Morgan and everything and thank y'all for being here. All in favor?
I recognize Tamara, let me tell you. Tamara's here.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Morgan, you want to introduce your wife for us?
I would love to.
Last unanimous. Thank you.